Let's call a meeting in order. Everyone, please stand and recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ashley, can I roll call, please?
Klaa.
Here.
Alt.
Here.
Hibma.
Here.
Shastel.
Here.
Fisher.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Cavalier.
Here.
Brecken.
Here.
Okay, it's time for the open forum. If anyone would like to address council on any issue not already on tonight's agenda, come to the podium, state your first, last name and address, please. Hearing nothing from council chambers. Anybody on the phone bridge, please?
Nobody on the phone bridge, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, no presentations. This brings us to the agenda. Does anyone wish to add anything to tonight's agenda? Do we have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll make that motion, Your Honor.
I'll say.
Clayton and...
I think Joseph got it.
Joseph, thank you. Uh, discussion, hearing none, roll call, please.
Klaa.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Hibma.
Aye.
Shastel.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Brecken.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings us to the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to remove anything from the consent agenda? Can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Thank you, Henry, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dawn, thank you. Roll call, please.
Klaa.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Hibma.
Aye.
Shastel.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Brecken.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. This brings us to the regular agenda. Ashley, please.
Yes, Your Honor, item 7.01 has a resolution regarding a donation from Finn and Fit for the Croxton Pool.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved, yeah.
Thank you, Dawn, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Clayton, discussion. Anything to add, Darren?
Ah, yes, Your Honor, um, so as Ashley stated, it's a donation for fifty-three hundred dollars. Breaks down to thirty-three hundred dollars for boiler repairs and two thousand dollar donation for a floating volleyball net. Uh, these funds were raised, uh, um, by a youth group that, uh, raised the money through food stands throughout the city of Croxton, and they're actually here today. And, um, they'd like to just acknowledge him and come up, and they'd like to say a couple words, please.
I'm Carol with Finn and Fit, and, um, I want to bring some of our lemonade stand people. And I'll let you introduce yourselves, okay?
My name is Lucy, and I helped raise money for the Croxton Pool.
So I'm Mary Ann Isaacs, I'm Lucy's mom. And so we were one of fourteen families that hosted lemonade stands across Croxton to help raise the money. We were, um, kind of spearheaded by Christie Fitzgerald and Anna Brecken. And so they wished they could be here tonight, so, um, but we are very thankful that they asked us to participate in the lemonade stand. So Lucy has started swim lessons, uh, it was last July, August. And then we had a short shutdown with the pool, and she has been in every swim session during the school year. We were gone part of the lessons for June and July, but we started again in August. So she started off, she is now in level six. Do you want to tell them what you did today for the first time?
She just got out of the water.
She's been in the pool for ninety minutes, so three-thirty for the swim club, and then lessons were at four-thirty. So she has been in the pool today for ninety minutes, and we came right over. So, do you want to tell them what you did today for the first time?
I just went out for the high dive.
Nice.
So, but thank you so much for your support of the pool. There are so many kids there who are learning skills, building confidence, major confidence. And, um, so we're just very thankful that you guys have, uh, continued to support the pool, and thank you to Finn and Fit. So, and I know all the other kids, if they could be here tonight, they would be here. So I think we got switched on your agenda from last week to this week, so, anyway, we're thankful that we get to represent them.
Uh, there were fourteen lemonade stands that participated in the pool fundraiser, and most average two to three families hosting each one. The fact that so many people were willing to put their time and money into support our pool is an indication of how much the young families of the city of Croxton value our pool. We are so thankful this money will help to keep the pool running in this short term. But even more, we hope you will keep the community's commitment and prioritize, or priorities in mind as you plan for the long term. Thank you for your time, Anna Brecken, Christie Fitzgerald, and the families of the community lemonade stand.
And you want to introduce yourself and your family?
This is Warren Peru, Beau, and I'm Katie. And Warren just started swimming lessons, and he just moved up to level two today. Do you want to tell them what you did? We bobbed.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Uh, further discussion. Hearing none, can I roll call, please?
Klaa.
Aye.
Alt.
Aye.
Hibma.
Aye.
Shastel.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Briggs.
Aye.
Cavalier.
Aye.
Brecken.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. All right, this brings us to council reports. Anything tonight, Darren?
Uh, yeah, as, uh, you can see the attachments, attached report for each respective department head. Um, you know, in administration, among the many other meetings, budget meetings continue with each department head. Holly and I have been meeting with each respective department, working on the preliminary, uh, budgets. Um, and again, just a reminder, um, after tonight, we do have, again, another budget meeting on the seventeenth at five-thirty. We go on the Republic Works Department. On the twenty-second, five-thirty, library airport and a CIP discussion. The twenty-fourth, at five-thirty, nonprofit grant presentations. And the twenty-ninth will be a levy discussion to set the preliminary levy. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Uh, Dawn, anything tonight?
I just want to thank Scott Butt, uh, in his new position. He did a good job for Ward Four already, tearing down that old fence that was dangerous for the kids to play on. And also, I'd like to thank the police department for dogs barking from Ward Four. We had a, uh, a couple dogs down there that are barking all night long, and so the police department went down there and said, "Get those dogs in the bed," and whatever they're going to be putting in. So thanks for the, to the police department for giving those things, and Scott Butt. Thank you.
Thank you. Derek?
Uh, nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Thank you, Delane?
Um, just thanks to Finn and Fit for the nice donation, and hopefully we can keep this stuff going, so that's all I have.
Thanks. Wendy?
Nothing tonight.
Thank you. Morgan?
Um, just wanted to let the families know that tomorrow there will be the Celebrate the Young Children initiative, collaborated with the, um, Wildwood Park with Ladybugs from five to six-thirty, um, at Wildwood Park. So if people are looking for something to do outdoors, that will be happening. And then, you know, it's a little bit of ways, but on October sixth at five-thirty to six-thirty, the ECI will be, um, hosting their Boo Run Run again down at Castle Park. Um, for kids where there are pumpkins and kids who don't mind lemon, it's a fun career costume, so.
Thank you. Joseph, anything?
Uh, yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, yeah, I want to commend Finn and Fit as well. I think having the tenacity to raise funds and the creativity of the lemonade stands is outstanding. I'd also hope that that group continues to work on behalf of the overall citizens of this, of Croxton, and maybe even think about how to better use that facility, including, uh, these large areas that are not, are, you know, not full, that just large deck areas could actually be used for something as well, tai chi and so on. They're a very creative group, uh, and I'm sure they're going to keep on pushing forward. Um, I also want to thank Scott as well, uh, in helping in addressing issues about opening the rink, the, the ice rinks poorly. Uh, and I think having a rapid response is very, very helpful. People get frustrated, and it also keeps people here local rather than having to go elsewhere to use the rink. It's a very busy time of year coming out of December to Colorado as, as, uh, ice hockey practices. In terms of, uh, Ward One, I, I had some people approach me about asking when the fall cleanup time is. And I think for just general transparency, I think other people, they ask that as well. And if you're thinking about that, that's October twentieth and twenty-fourth to pass that on, because people are wondering, you know, they're cleaning out their houses and so on, and get that information out there. And I think, um, if there's questions about that, to contact the council, or not the council of Croxton, um, we're Tina at the front desk.
Thank you. Henry?
Nothing for me.
Clayton?
Thank Finn and Fit and the families that put all the lemonade stands. It's nice to have the community involved in helping support things within the city. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd also like to thank, uh, Finn and Fit, without their donations over the last year, I mean, I think we would be wondering how to keep the pool open. So thank you, Carol, and the lemonade stand people, and everyone that made it happen, thank you. That is all I have. Just a reminder, we will be having a budget meeting tonight, so nothing else coming forward, council, we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
That's a partial reimbursement for the bulletproof vests that we buy for our officers. And any federal overtime that is reimbursed to our officers. Police training reimbursement, that is from the Minnesota Postboard. We receive a portion of our training money back for training our officers. It's a fiscal year, June to July, and it depends on the amount of officers that you have on staff at that time. Historically, we received about nine hundred and fifty dollars per officer. However, there has been some legislative changes for two thousand twenty six, and they reduced that amount to eight hundred and ninety per officer. So you see a slight decrease from the current year in that budgeted item. One directly under that, three, four, two, two, state grants, other police. Um, that's a, a state aid, it's not a grant, it's reimbursement. It helps subsidize pension costs for the P E R A, police and fire. This year anticipated, we haven't received the exact award amount, anticipating two hundred and fourteen thousand. We'll get that amount in October first. School resource officer, three, six, three, zero. The amount in there is a fifty percent cost share with the school. Uh, that also includes their fringe benefits and all associated healthcare, anything related to that.
Darren?
Yes.
So, so on the state grants, uh, the one that's listed, the proposed budget is two hundred and fourteen thousand. Why is there such a difference in two thousand twenty-three versus two thousand twenty-four? It's like a hundred seventy-seven thousand, then it drops down to nine thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five. Is that just a typo error, or is that actually?
Um, I think I had a note on the nine thousand. I do believe that it's just a journal entry on that one.
Okay.
Let me see, yeah, I actually have a journal entry here. So for two thousand twenty-four, we actually received two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and one dollars. And if I might be correct, I think we're still in partial audit for that year. That might be a reason that it has not been updated. Uh, but that was actually two hundred and fourteen thousand received that year also.
Thank you.
Four, two, zero, one, special police services. So we get reimbursed anytime that we do mental health transports. Uh, we get reimbursed by Polk County, uh, through funds that they have. On average, as you can see, I did budget that for four thousand. We have brought in fifty-one thirty in two thousand twenty-five. Again, a very difficult number to anticipate as we don't know how many transports we do. Um, however, with that item, what I would like to do, and I've discussed this previously within the last year, is um, kind of what trending with police departments that I've checked around areas to reserve those funds into a vehicle fund and use those for purchasing vehicles in the future. So that is something that we will, um, we'd like to explore moving forward as to reserving that into a special fund to buy vehicles. As it does put wear and tear on our vehicles when we do those transports. Four, two, zero, six, animal control shelter, um, animal control shelter, sorry. Those are the fees we reimburse, uh, we get reimbursed for on animals that we impound at the main society. Again, you'll see that it's lower this year. If you remember, the main society was closed for half of the year. So, um, or I should say about three, four months of this year. They were closed half the year for the public, but they opened up for us a couple of months early. So again, the revenues are low on that as they were closed for most of the year. Let's see, parking violation, just that, any parking, uh, violations to bring in. Refunds, reimbursements. That's typically some funds that we get from the Minnesota judicial branch, typically like restitution. If we have damage to vehicles or something else that were collected by the courts.
So that, that the traffic fines are dictated by the, about that, to be charged is dictated by the state?
Correct, correct. That one, and that one there, the refunds reimbursement is typically like restitution or something. If you go to the next line item, fines and forfeitures, five, one, zero, one, court and traffic fines. That is the amount that we receive from the state as a portion of traffic site, or traffic citations that the officers do right through.
Is dictated by the state?
Correct.
Darren?
Yes.
For the traffic violations, uh, the, for example, the hundred eighty in two thousand twenty-three. And then it all, it, it's, you know, it's always below, it looks like five hundred dollars per year. Is that pretty typical for, for a city of our size?
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry, what line item were you on?
Uh, this, this was four, three, oh, two.
Parking violations.
Parking violations.
Parking violations, yeah, so those are, um, those aren't a state, that's a civil, uh, citation that we issue. It's an ordinance, and they're, they're ten dollars a, a, a parking citation for parking ordinance violation. So, um, you know, we do issue some, but, but typically pretty low. Typically how it works, per Minnesota statute is, if we have a parking violation, we will either, you know, take pictures, uh, chalk the tires or note where the vehicle is, um, and then if it doesn't move within twenty-four hours, we're very public friendly, often we will call the owners and ask them to move the vehicles. Um, if they don't respond at that point, we would issue a parking ordinance for that violation. So honestly, most of them we try to take care of without issuing any citations for that. Rental storage units, that's impound fees that we have at our impound lot if we have to impound any vehicles. That is about it on the revenue side, unless there's any questions.
What's on these revenues, would we have oversight of how much we can?
Dictate?
Dictate?
So, I mean, it would be dog and cat license, um, special vehicle permits. Uh, impound, uh, you know, again, we used to have higher numbers on impound, but, uh, you know, per statutes and different things. We don't impound a lot of vehicles. You know, animal control shelter, we charge what the contract reads. So, I mean, again, if we upped that contract, we would also pay more. So we just try to reimburse our funds on anything that we have for that. That's a difficult one. Honestly, would probably just be those ones right there. And, and a couple of years ago, um, if you remember, we did change a fee schedule on some of those, and we did update them. Although they're minimal costs on those licenses, but we did update them to try to in- increase the fees slightly.
Darren, when money's being brought in, then that's going into some, some way to make money as well, so it goes into a bank. Do we, does also revenue then take a look at the interest that we make on those monies and what bank we use?
Yeah, so, uh, we do have, uh, investment accounts for any reserves that we have, and we do track the interest in that on those accounts, correct?
Cause I know, there is, we're working to see, are we getting the highest rates for our monies?
So we, we went with a different firm about, I believe, was a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago. Um, and I know there was some detailed research at that time. Um, so it's probably been about a year and a half, but I, I would argue that I think we're probably in a pretty good shape we're investing right now.
So we're getting three percent or better, at least?
Yeah.
Okay, do you know how high?
Um, we just had to review someone, I think it was four point two, so.
Just higher than a lot of CDs, okay.
Okay, um, expenditures, so again, starting at the top. One, zero, I'm sorry, zero, one, zero, one. So starting at salaries down to, it'd be zero, two hundred. Those are, again, the increases are just per, uh, union contract. And also all the other increases in there would just be reflected of that, including P E R A, health insurance, et cetera. Um, so unless there's any questions on those top few items, I will just move on.
Um, on the overtime?
Sure.
Are we, uh, staffed up so that we're not gonna be hitting overtime as hard as we have been?
So, um, and I, I do think I have a breakdown of that. It's deceiving, overtime looks worse than it truly is. So we get reimbursed for several of our overtime. So, uh, we do, uh, state grant funded activities, we do some federal. Um, we do get, uh, quite a bit of federal reimbursement on some of these grants. So our actual overtime that we're typically seeing.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be in, like, reflected in the revenue if we're getting reimbursed for overtime?
It, it, it would, uh, however, there are some journal entries that need to be updated to reflect that.
So like when we're like one oh nine last year, and we're at seventy-eight now, when we're budgeted for seventy-five, like, we're going to get that reimbursement, it's gonna be closer to seventy-five?
Yes, so typically overtime is, is honestly around that seventy thousand mark. Um, again, all of it comes out of there, uh, it's not reflecting the reimbursements that we would get for that. However, this year again, um, was high. We had some critical incidents that we had to work through this summer, which did trigger some overtime. Um, in twenty-four, I, I think some of those numbers also were staffing issues. But again, the actual seventy-five thousand dollars that we do a lot for, um, we typically do not go over that. Um, however, as I'll explain more as we go through, I mean, all of the training, post-mandated training and stuff that we do is, is all on overtime dollars, unfortunately, just how the, the shifts work out. So there is going to always be embedded overtime. You know, we work hard not to go over that again this year. We had some critical incidents, and again, it's not reflecting the reimbursements that we do receive for that.
Are we, are we gonna get the reimbursements on like next year's or anything like? Cause I mean, we, we obviously need to make a line item where that can go into. Cause if we're getting it and it's actually at seventy thousand and not a hundred ten, we, we need to know that that's coming in.
Yep, and we, uh, we can make those entries and we can send out an updated copy. Hopefully by the prelim or in the, in the near future, I can certainly do that.
So, a couple of years ago, we added a couple more officers. Has that made a lot, a lot of difference?
It has, um, and it, I don't have the numbers prior to that, but our overtime was almost double that without the staffing, just with the short staffing that we had. It has absolutely made a difference for officer safety and for overtime costs.
Is this something that we need to consider down the road?
As far as, sorry, as far as what?
Additional?
You know, I, I think currently, right now, at the science department we have, and I'm pretty comfortable at our staffing levels. I wouldn't want to go any less, but, um, and again, I would have to audit that Clayton Pass twenty twenty-three to show you those numbers. But if you do recall, some that were on council, um, I think overtime was in a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand mark when we were short-staffed.
Some of this overtime too has contributed to if an officer has got to go to court. And if they, you know, they could be there all day, and they still have to get paid for their time there. Or, you know, a lot of times it could be settled. You know, they don't know if they're first in line or the last one in line, so they need to be there until.
I mean, I understand, but I mean, like, we just, I just wanted, like, I mean, I trust that Darren is saying, we're actually, like, when we do get reimbursed, we're down to seventy-five, but I mean, like, we just need to see that it actually is.
Correct, yeah.
So I mean, like, yeah, if this is the overtime budget, we're good with the overtime budget, we just need to see it.
So some, some, some journal entries that need to be made in that, Henry, also is, so like our drug task force officers, they're, uh, a lot of their funds are reimbursed. Mental health transports, if it's overtime, does come out of that line item, as you saw earlier. Uh, they reimburse most of those hours. We do have an officer on a FBI task force, all those overtime hours are reimbursed. Any towards zero death, we used to call it safe and sober back in the day. All of those are reimbursed dollar amounts. You know, community outreach, that, that is a big one for us, you know, Safety Town, Nighty Night, OX Card, et cetera. Um, that one in itself can bring a hundred hours of overtime for the entire department. Um, and then we also have some other federal grants that probably take the lion's share of that that are reimbursed. So, um, yeah. But again, we can update that and get an updated copy out to you.
Thank you.
Um, just moving on from zero, two hundred, office supplies down, I'm just looking at any major changes.
What would be oh, three, oh, three contractual? That seems to jump significantly.
Yep, I'm definitely gonna get into that one for you, I'm just, um, yeah, I think everything else on those is pretty much the same. So contractual, um, again, that one looks worse than it truly is. Again, a journal entry needs to be made, so if you remember under some prior IT, all of the IT-related contracts were paid out of the IT budget. So that would be for our records management system, our body worn cameras, in-car cameras, uh, interview room, uh, software. Um, all of those came out, and those are the lion's share of that cost. Um, there had been some mishaps in the past where budgeting items were missed, so it was determined it was probably best served to go back to the respective department for them to pay for them. Uh, after Joel took over, we had extensive discussion about that, and we just thought for best practices, it would work good for those to come back into each respective department. So of that number, um, that number should have been entered at, at fifty-nine thousand. We do still have, um, approximately thirty thousand dollars to transfer over from IT to pay for some of these, um, IT-related costs that would come out of our department. Uh, some increases with that for two thousand twenty-six is our records management system, uh, annual inflation of three-year per our contract. And we had not, uh, and this was countywide and all the other contracts that I checked the other ages. We have, uh, five different agencies sharing our records management system. They had not been charging us for the mobile version of it in the squad cars. Um, the company has since been out, bought out two different times, like, uh, many large software companies have. And now they're charging us for the mobile CAD services, which increased our fees by about fifty-six hundred dollars. Another increased fee there was, uh, last year, uh, it was agreed that, uh, we would update our interview room software, which is an annual recurring fee for that. So the actual increase in the budget for two thousand twenty-six is twenty thousand dollars after the transfer of funds from IT. Additional fees that come out of that, uh, that line item are, we have to pay the state to use there. It's called the CG, uh, CJD and Network, Criminal Justice Data Network. That's where we run any license plates or criminal histories on individuals. That's also the printer copier charges that we have on leases or rented the police department. And any other associated fees that would come into something like a contract that we have. Hopefully that answered your question. Same thing on dog expense, three, zero, three, one, five. Uh, we're, you're gonna see we're lower this year, um, which is, is thankful. Some of those funds will offset some of the over the cost on like a contractual item that. I tried to get out of paying for twenty-five or prorate those new costs, it just wasn't feasible. I wasn't able to do that, I wasn't able to negotiate that. But as you can see, it's lower this year, again, because the main society was closed for a good portion of the year. As you roll down on the next page, just kind of scrolling through down to the bottom. Unless something stands up for me, we have, uh,
Darren, I had a question about National Night Out.
Yes, sure.
I saw that it was in, uh, doing a great job, by the way, it's hard to go through the budget. Um, two thousand twenty-three, there was two thousand five hundred, and then I didn't see anything, it's such a great event. And I, I didn't see an entry numerical value above zero for anything beyond two thousand twenty-three. Just wondering, since it's such a positive event, happens in August, like, helps the law enforcement and working with the community.
Yeah, so, so.
Continuing that, I guess.
Yeah, so what I did after two thousand twenty-three is I just moved those funds over into zero, four, five, eight, community outreach. Okay, so that three thousand dollars, a breakdown of that, approximately, uh, two thousand-ish dollars goes to help support Night to Night, among other fundraising that we do. The other fundraising that we do for Night to Night is fundraised through our Police Benefit Association, who's a five oh three C company, so that, uh, donors can get the full write-off for that. Um, and then the other portion is used, typically the remainder thousand dollars or less is used to fund our Halloween party or Halloween drive-through that we have. So those I just rolled all into one.
What's the number of that on here?
So, zero, four, five, eight, community outreach.
That's it, okay, thank you.
And then on, uh, travel and training expenses, is it just because we got so many new people coming in?
Oh, thank you, yes. So the, the thought behind that, again, I just remember this is preliminary, uh, these are the numbers that we're using. But on the travel and training, um, let me just find that so I can tell you.
Zero, three, three, one.
So what's happened over the years, uh, post-Floyd and, and other incidents throughout the state and the nation is, uh, as you can imagine, the state has, um, mandated additional training every year for our officers to complete. You know, that training that we have mandatory by the state that we have to complete is every year we have a driving school, we call EVOC, evasive driving. Uh, every three to five years, each officer post-license has to go through that, it's a very expensive school. We have online training that we pay for, uh, we have our in-house instructors, defensive tactics, taser, less lethal. And all of those that combine with that, the in-house training on that, uh, to pay for the fees and go through that. We're typically using the original budget of fifteen thousand, you can see eighteen this year. We had a couple, um, certificates that we had to renew, which I'll make up in the budget. Uh, we're done spending training money this year. We were in budget, but there were a couple surprises that came up recently. We're spending basically our training budget right now just to meet the post-mandatory training requirements, and we're not having additional funds to send our officers to elective trainings such as de-escalation or anything else that could help provide them better community service. If you remember from page one, we're getting back about fifteen to eighteen thousand in reimbursement from the state. The goal or thought behind that was, is we're getting reimbursed about half of that already. Um, and, and, you know, I, I do have to touch up that number, um, cause anytime we do send a training, obviously there's gonna be some other salary associated costs with that. Uh, we put thirty thousand as a placeholder, will likely come down, but it would be, the thought would be to have some additional funds for elective training for officers to attend.
So with them, with them training comes up, is that for every officer coming up in the same fiscal year?
Every year we are required by the state postboard to do a certain amount of training, correct, that we have to do.
So every officer, so, I thought you said one of them was like every five years they have to?
Uh, uh, yeah, I was just gonna, so we do have annual training that we have to do mandatory each state, uh, each year. And then within that license cycle, so your, our licenses are three years, they're valid for three years. So within that cycle, that's when we often, you know, have to do the, the driving schools, uh, and some other training requirements within three years. However, with a staff of eighteen, that still means on, you know, a three-year rotation that we're sending approximately five or so officers.
So it isn't, it's not every officer for that?
Yes.
Okay, correct.
So you have, uh, you, you have in-house training officers, correct?
Correct, we, we, we have firearms instructors, less lethal instructors, taser instructors. And those recert, recertifications also come to about every couple of years. That's where we, uh, went over a couple thousand this year on a, a instructor recertification that was missed. Again, still the cost to have in-house trainers is, you know, a third or less of the cost of sending someone, uh, to a school to get trained for that. So again, it's within our, our benefit to have in-house trainers. But again, with that too, comes a cost on recertification every couple of years on that also. And then on the five hundred numbers, again, if you remember, those are, um, capital improvements. And as we said before, we're putting all of our capital improvements into, um, the budgets. Forty thousand dollars in five, or zero, five, two, zero, buildings and structures, uh, listed forty thousand in there. Um, thirty thousand of that was to replace the retaining wall in the back, uh, police department parking lot. Uh, it's original to the building, I did originally receive, um, bids for that in two thousand twenty-four. And just with annual inflation and talking to contractor, it would cost about thirty thousand dollars to replace that. It currently isn't a safety hazard, however, it's deteriorating. You know, like all the other old buildings in town, those bricks start to crumble and deteriorate. And then the other ten thousand dollars again was for, uh, some evidence and, uh, basement upgrades. Again, um, you know, that's, these are obviously preliminary numbers. Motor vehicles, zero, five, five, zero, ninety-five thousand. Um, breakdown of that is seventy-five thousand would cover the cost of a new squad car, including the equipment and outfit for that squad car. Upfit is installing that equipment into the squad car. Uh, the other twenty-five thousand, um, I'm sorry, other twenty thousand would be to, uh, try to start a, a vehicle fund to, uh, replace our other vehicles. We currently have a replacement plan for our marked squad cars. We don't, do not for the other four, uh, investigators and travel vehicles that we have. The plan would be to put twenty thousand dollars away each year, uh, to hopefully, you know, replace those vehicles as they accrue additional miles. And again, you know, we, we've, we've proposed that for the last couple of years, and we understand that sometimes we can't meet all these needs. But again, we just put it back in the budget for this year. And then lastly, um,
Question for you, what is your oldest squad car? That's in use.
I, I do not believe I'd be able to pull that up for you right now. I mean, there, there, some of them are seven, eight years old, some are a year old, some are months old. So, I mean, I could, I could get that information for you at the next budget workshop, but unfortunately, I can't look in that folder if I'm not directly tethered to the internet here.
So, are these squads that are taken out of service, are they sold, or are they used within the city?
Both? So historically, I mean, sometimes the squad cars, and if you remember, uh, from prior, um, budget meetings, we weren't able to buy during COVID and coming out of COVID, it was about two and a half years before we were able to buy a squad car. Uh, and if we, you know, it used to be we could order them in January, and we'd get them, you know, roughly in May, and hopefully have them on the road June or July. Now, if we don't order the squad cars in like, uh, May or June of the year prior, we, we won't get them. Um, so, you know, we, we've had excess miles on a lot of the vehicles that we have. We've been able to replace a couple of them, um, and, and typically what we do is, you know, either repurpose them for a spare squad car, cause we do like to try to have two fully equipped spare squad cars on hand. And if they're in decent shape, like we've done with the building, uh, department, we would pass them on to other departments. But sometimes those squad cars are shot when we're done with them. So then what we do at that point is we do, we, we take all the wrappings off of them, so they're black, we sell them. And again, uh, as I mentioned earlier with the mental health funds, what we'd like to do is take the funds from any city police cars, put those in a fund for future purses, purchases also.
And then, um, I know everything's going up every year, like, so we've been pushing the new squad car off. Like, do you know how much the price of one has gone up from, since we didn't get one last year, to what it's gone up to this year?
Yeah, so, you know, we, we, historically, they're called the police interceptor, but they're basically a Ford, uh, um, Explorer. And, um, they're just shy of fifty thousand now, and pre-COVID, I think we're buying for about thirty-eight thousand.
Okay.
So in the last five years, they've substantially increased.
Yes, because, I mean, I just don't wanna be like, let's push it off another year, and then it goes up another six grand.
Yeah, and that, especially after COVID, I'm sure Morgan could talk to that too in the, in the vehicle business, but, uh, it was sticker shock how expensive the cars went up in price.
They're not having that.
Yeah. And honestly, uh, if my, my five-year CIP, I don't think, I, I think even as, as soon as twenty-seven, I started to add five thousand dollars onto them because fifty thousand barely buys you a squad car.
I had a follow-up on that, uh, number one, I, I think it's great to be proactive and, and if you have to be a line item, you always have a constant amount coming in, such that you can plan for, I'm gonna need a cruiser three years from now. And by that time we get there, there's enough money in the pot to actually get there. That's just, you're good and thinking forward, so that you meet your needs in the future. I'm also wondering, is it cheap, it's weird to say this, is it cheaper to buy two cars instead of one? Because you get each one a little bit cheaper? Is, is there, and if so, can you can't partner with another city, when they need one and we need one? You can't, that doesn't work that way? I know, first of all, I've gotten to buy, well, a long, long time ago, we made the unfortunate decision to buy two cars at once, but we actually got a better deal on each car, just, I'm assuming we think about these things, right?
So, and, and the problem that we run into, again, you know, we're, we're paying, say, forty, we'll just say fifty thousand for a squad car. I mean, if you were to buy that same car, the retail for the general public, that's probably, uh, you know, a sixty or sixty-five thousand dollar car. So that's the other piece of theirs, they're bid out on state contract prices. Thankfully, our local dealer matches, uh, those prices, so we always have bought them local. But those numbers are pretty much set, and I know that there's not a lot of room to move on state contract pricing.
They have fleet pricing, which is.
Yeah.
They already have the lowest price anyway.
So we already are, correct, yes, yeah. Two more, I think we're done here, um, The other one is other equipment, zero five eight zero. You will see in twenty twenty five that we spent one hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. You'll also see that in the fire budget. If you remember, at the end of twenty twenty three, I believe maybe it was in, end of twenty twenty four, but we received approximately three hundred and fifteen dollars as state aid from the state of Minnesota. Every law enforcement agency in the state received that. Our lion, our share was about three hundred and fifteen thousand. It was decided to purchase all new radios for the city, police and fire. Between the two of us, I think it was right around three hundred thousand. So again, you'll see that large expenditure, however, there are funds to reimburse that, so.
So is that in the same calendar year then, or same?
Correct, we have the money already.
So where did that, where did that funds come in on the revenue side then?
So when we receive the money, oh, sorry, listen.
I was gonna say the funds came in the end of twenty three.
Oh, twenty three, it was, okay.
So we got the money in December of twenty three, I think it was December twenty sixth of twenty three. So that money has been held here for them to do that with.
It would, it's just going to be a matter of a journal entry, delay to move that money over. And then.
Say, excuse me, Darren. We've got a lot to go through, so at the end of our budgets tonight, I'll give you ten, ten minutes to make the case. Thank you.
Last item then is just other, other equipment, forty eight thousand. You know, I just had some money marked in there for speed display signs. We used to have a speed display trailer that has, that's probably, I would argue, twenty years old. It's out of service. The plan was to try to get some speed display signs that we could relocate throughout the city at different times, on different streets. The other twenty thousand was again, to replace radios, money moving forward for radios. You know, granted, we, we received radios this year, that, that funds could probably be pushed off one year. But again, our radios have about a ten-year service life. You know, our cost was one hundred and seventy five thousand this year, anticipating in ten years it will likely be two hundred thousand or more. So the plan was twenty thousand a year for ten years. And.
So the, the speed display signs, that, that, you got that in this year's budget?
I, I do have it in as a proposed budget, yes, as part of it.
So how much are they?
Well, we have ten thousand dollars in there, which would buy us, with the hanging equipment, everything, roughly two of them.
So, hey, my mind is going to, on this budget says necessities. So what is the impact of having them? Is it something that?
The signs?
Yeah.
You know, so when our speed display trailer before it went out of service, you know, we would always get comments from citizens that people are speeding down the roads or, or what it is. And obviously, the visual effect of people driving fast is often faster, it appears faster than it is. So the, the concept behind that is a deterrent for people to slow down when they see the signs. And two, they register all of the traffic that would be picked up on that sign and we can run reports. And typically, like I said, people say, oh, the car was going fifty miles an hour. And sometimes you'll see that cars don't exceed about twenty-five miles an hour, but it just is really deceiving to the eye. So, you know, it was always just a good deterrent in the past to have those out there to try to slow people down. And then we could run the reports back to the public and/or council if they had any complaints on traffic in certain areas.
I mean, I, I, I think it's great, but is that, is that something we could probably earmark if we need to make cuts? That talk about at some point in time?
In the O fives, right, so that's capital improvement.
Yeah, so if, if you remember, we will be having further discussion about those. Yeah, thank you. I think that's everything, unless there's any other questions.
Can we throw the after question?
At the end of our next two budgets.
So we're gonna bring up all the topics as the next?
Yes.
Even if they're just general topics?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I think that's all I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is fire department emergency management. I think we've got Shane zooming in. Everybody hear him? Okay, whenever you're ready, Shane.
Good, I'm sorry, Shane, can you go back for a second? The total revenue, can you hear me? Okay, this is Joseph. So in two thousand twenty-three, the total revenue was one hundred forty-two thousand, which is more than twice as high as it is in two thousand twenty-four. And the main issue, and I think you were saying it, but I didn't quite understand, the second item, the twenty-one eighty-three licenses rental program, can you explain again, if you would, the two thousand twenty-three difference from two thousand twenty-four? Because of seventy thou, seventy-five thousand, almost seventy-six thousand compared to three thousand. What, what was the explanation for that again? I don't understand the rental program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying.
So what is, Shane, what is the, for rental certification, what is the cost for the license? Okay, thank you.
What, what is the point, what is the point where it does increase? Is it like twenty units or?
A flat rate at fifty dollars per unit. When you get to eighteen, we have a range from eighteen to thirty and then from thirty-one to fifty. And then anything that's larger than fifty units has its own set amount.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. If there's no other questions right now on the revenue side, then I believe we should be able to jump into our expenses side. When you look at zero one through zero one, all the way through zero one three three, those are all contractual, so not much say that we can have on those. Those are going to be just based on the contracts with full-time staff. As we work our way through the budget, the one, Henry, I think you were talking about this earlier and somebody else. I know we were talking about the radio issue or the radio purchases with Darren and the PD. If you look at zero two two one, you will see that is an extremely high number at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars with a budget of thirty-six thousand dollars. I, that, that one's on me. That is, it's a miscommunication on my end. I am working with Holly, Miranda, Vance. We're gonna get that coded where it needs to be to simplify it. I didn't know where Darren was coding his and I wanted to code, code mine the same. And so what happened there is when I coded it where I thought I was gonna code it and then found out that the police department was coding it somewhere else, I've reached out to Holly and we've talked about this. And so that number that you see there is not a reflection of twenty twenty-five's repairs for equipment. That number will decrease significantly once we have those numbers coded where they are supposed to. So I don't want anybody jumping off the page on that one. That one is going to be adjusted. We can get you a finalized number, a closer number, once we get that adjusted. But that's, that's because I coded it wrong, it got entered wrong. I had to go back to Holly and explain to her what happened. Sounds like a couple entries can be adjusted. Well, that number will get to be a more realistic number. So for anybody that sees that, there, there's nothing there except for I miscoded the funds of where they should have come out of. When we do move into any real other adjustments that I have, zero two four three, that is a line item that I do need to increase. And the reason for that increase, if anybody's heard, OSHA and with NFPA backing now, they are requiring that fire department staffing, they have annual physicals. And this isn't your run-of-the-mill physical with firefighter health being at the forefront of pretty much everything that they're driving these days. I had to increase that line item to cover the annual physicals that the full-time staff will have to take now on an annual basis. When we look at zero three zero six, that's our contract with the Crooks and Firefighters Association. Now, that contract, as you can see, has gone up a little bit. Their contract was for three years. Twenty twenty-six will be the final year of their contract. And so at some point in time in twenty twenty-six, we will probably start our negotiations again with the paid-on call or volunteer, the Fire, Crooks and Firefighters Association. But that number is contractual, so that's there. We know what to expect, that's why it's there in the budget. If you move it down, I think it's one line item, zero three one two. We look at that and we had that money or the budget we had last year, fifty-three hundred dollars. We now have that, we have decreased that to a thousand dollars. Talking with, I'm, I'm saying this chief salesman, I'm not going with city interim administrator. I'm going with chief salesman on this. We've decreased that line item. What that line item is for, when you look at past history, that is for any of the shots or any drug testing that has to be done, whether it's new hires or if we have any incidents where we have to have somebody tested, that, that is where that money comes from, is right there. So we did decrease that number. As we move down, we look into zero three three one, travel and training expense. Originally at twelve thousand five hundred, I have asked for the increase to fifteen thousand when that's just based on the requirements that are needed for full-time staff to be able to continue kind of in the same way of Darren's officers. They have to be when they're licensed in the city of Minnesota or in the state of Minnesota, excuse me. There's so many requirements that they have to have. I have a very young staff that is needing a lot of certifications. They are going to be looking at, in the future, going to these trainings. We have certain certifications that they need, whether it is by your inspector, by your instructor. They need these trainings as they progress through their career. So I've asked for an increase in that amount. One thing with that amount, some of that, if we go back to our reimbursement side of things in our revenues, some of that money is able to be refunded. So that's where we're at on that. Zero three five four, my public information, we've actually decreased that from four thousand to two thousand five hundred. When you look at the past history of that as well, we haven't been, in twenty-five, I did expect a larger amount that would be needed. And we ended up having a couple, a couple people in the community, businesses, individuals, that actually donated essentially to the fire department and donated to our cause when it came to our fire prevention week. That's a fund that is taken out of, or it, it takes into account fire prevention week, takes into account open house, night to unite, like Darren was talking about. Any public events that we have, this is the funding that we utilize for that. And with those donors' help, that number didn't get utilized or that account line item did not get utilized to its full potential, thanks to those donors.
Shane, excuse me.
Yeah, go ahead.
Forest uses, as well as the police department, I believe, that you also have firemen that also do training for the fire department, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yep, so the one thing with that zero three five four that I do think needs to be mentioned is that the full-time staff went out and they were able to get a grant and they now do what they call safe home inspections. The fire department will always come in at any point in time when the citizen requests it to come into a smoke detector survey where we will go and we will check to make sure that the smoke detectors are current, that they work, that they're in the proper place. We would also do that with carbon monoxide detectors. The full-time staff took on, knowing with the financial burdens that we have, they went and they applied and they got funding to provide some of these CO detectors, which takes off of this line item with what they were able to bring in on their own as the union. They're the ones that go out, they do this home safe surveys and they're the ones that are able to give these CO detectors to the residents that need them. So that is one program that the full-time staff took upon themselves and that is. And that is another reason why the funding that I asked for wasn't being utilized was because the full-time staff actually took it upon themselves to be able to, they knew that there was a need and they looked at the demographics of the community and they saw that we do have an aging population. And so they set up a couple parameters and they ran with this program. And they did their social interaction. They were at the Golden Link. They do announcements on social media. And they've been able to get into some of these homes that weren't properly protected. And with the funding they had, they were able to properly protect these homes and these citizens to keep our residents safe. So that's just one thing I do believe that needs to be annotated. And realistically, uniform allowance, so 0417. When we look at that number, that is an increase. That is also a contractual increase. So that one we will abide by. Before I get into any of my 500s, I guess I'll just open it up for questions.
Shane, how many calls on average do you go on a month?
You're making me do math. No, that's fine. I tell you what, let's just go on an average of one a day. So let's say 30, 31 calls.
Okay. Do you guys go on medical calls?
At this point in time, unless requested by the ambulance service, we do not. I also have staff that right now is in EMT class. So we will be able, at that point in time, with EMT certification for all the staff, we will be able to assist or run on medical calls.
So is that a plan moving forward to start going on more medical calls?
If requested, if requested and there is a, and there's a need for it, and we have been in conversation with the ambulance garage or Brookston, that there is that need and our staff has stepped up to fill that need. So enhancing their skills. They are hoping that we can do that in order to better protect the community.
Will that increase budget anywhere?
That is gonna be a conversation that I have with full-time staff when that comes to fruition.
Do we have a timeline planned for something like that?
I'm hoping beginning of 2026, maybe a couple months into 2026.
I'm just wondering if we're talking budget for 2026? Is that something we should be planning for?
At this point in time, I'm comfortable with the numbers that I have. And even with that, running those medical calls, I do believe we can make this work.
Well, and I'm just wondering even for like extra training or certifications with the staff that we have.
The nice thing is a lot of this training can be done in-house with our relationship with the ambulance garage. We don't gotta leave town. I'm really hoping that we can form that relationship, well, build on the relationship that's already there. And we will be able to use that to further our training qualifications and anything that is needed. We do currently have one EMT on staff at this point in time and that has not impacted the budget at this point in time. And I do not foresee any major increase at this point in time.
Okay. Thank you.
And Shane, how many full-time firefighters do we have right now?
We are fully staffed, so we have six full-time firefighters.
Okay.
If that's all we got for now, we can move into our 500 accounts. And that's gonna be 0520 through 0580. When you look at 0520, that's my buildings and structures. At this point in time, I do have $53,500 that is, or that's requested there. That is to replace an overhead door, air handling unit, water heater replacement. With those numbers, with the administrator that just left, instead of having it kind of in a line-by-line situation, the one thing, I guess my goal that I had was to have money set aside in case something goes wrong, in case something breaks. So instead of having it directly dedicated to an air handling unit, which is original to the building, or a water heater that, it's probably pretty close to original to the building. What I'm looking for is to build up those reserves. So if something happens, I've got funding that's sitting there. I don't have to come to the council and put you guys in a predicament that says, I need $20,000 that I didn't budget for because it was an unforeseen issue. This is one that I would like to have just in buildings and structures and be able to build up a reserve account for that. But these are my itemized requests when it comes to this preliminary hearing. When I look down, I go to 0530, that is other improvements. I have $15,000 there. That is set aside or would be allocated. The apron in front of our apparatus bay is starting, it's starting to break down. It's starting to pit, starting to crack. Presentation at the fire department's a big deal. We have guys that make sure the lawns mowed. We make sure that the snow has moved, landscaping, everything. They make sure that that place reflects the pride that they feel. And this is just one of those issues where we know what's coming at some point in time. And that's why I've got it on the budget for this year, is to try to replace that apron. If we move down to 040, that's a larger number with 58,000. That's got in it my turnout gear that I request on an annual basis. It's also got a battery-operated auto extrication tool, which when we have two firefighters on the first responding vehicle, what we have right now, our TNT equipment that we have, it's got a power unit and it has hydraulic hoses and it's got a hydraulic tool. It takes two guys to be able to lift it, to place it, and then to be able to get it started and running. With two guys, that does take some time. With battery-operated tools, that allows one person to go and immediately assess the situation and see what we need while the other firefighter is able to be able to just grab the tool with the battery power on it, be able to grab it and they can start with their plan of action and they can move forward with any extrication that's needed, stabilization. So that's what the AutoX tool is for. And I have in there a 20-foot enclosed trailer. The 20-foot enclosed trailer has come from the trench rescue equipment that we have acquired last year. We acquired it last year because fire departments share equipment. And when one department got some brand-new stuff, we were able to upgrade our stuff at no cost. With that being said, we also had a neighboring department that got the same equipment. Their equipment, the way they have that set up in this enclosed trailer, we started talking and how nice would it be if we had a catastrophic event and whether it was trench rescue vehicles or building stabilization, if we had to get in somewhere to have two trailers that looked exactly the same? This is thinking maybe outside the scope of just the city of Brookston, but maybe more reaching. And so the idea is to have two trailers that are set up the exact same, that we can deploy to the same area where we have two fire departments that know exactly where to look and what to look for in the incidents that we would need something. In there, I also have one line item that might make a couple of the council members probably shake their heads. But I have $10,000 included for radios. And you're gonna tell me, yeah, I just got radios. Why do I need $10,000 for radios? Well, as Darren had said, the cost of those radios, it's not gonna get any cheaper. So once again, putting money aside to have it when radios need to be upgraded, which between Darren and I, I mean, that's out of our hands. When these radios need to be upgraded, we have to upgrade. So with an outside entity being the driving force, this is me just asking to put money aside for when and if that time comes. And that's just gonna be that, that's full-time staff. That's what we're looking for. If we move down, we've got 0550. That's my motor vehicle fund. So that is, that's my fund to replace fire apparatus. The ask there is $92,000. A couple years ago, I did hand out an Excel spreadsheet and I can share it if needed to get a better under, so for you to get a better understanding of where that number comes from. Years previous, it had been 40,000, 45,000. When I ran the numbers and I looked and I plugged in my formulas, that's not really crazy science. It's just to go along with inflation. With all the apparatus that the city owns, the number that comes up is $92,000 on an annual basis. That money going in will be a continuation and that will constantly be funding the fire apparatus fund, meaning that when a vehicle comes due for time to replacement, we'll have the money that is sitting there. Instead of me having to come to the council and asking for 200, 300, $400,000 to replace an apparatus that's aging out, having the money there now at middle increments, instead of one large lump sum, is the reason that I'm asking for that money and that 0550. The last one I have is 0580 and that request is $40,000 under my other equipment. And that has got a gas track, laser gas detector. That is a conversation that I had with Great Plains Natural Gas this last year. And that is a detector. We do have our four gas monitors. Those do work. This gas track monitor is another step up. If we have a gas stick inside a home, our monitors right now are not able to read what's inside the home without going in. This monitor allows us to be able to read from outside what the parts per million of gases or any combustible gases would be inside the home. That's firefighter safety, that's public safety. If we know it's an immediate evacuation or if it's something that we can actually address by making entry. The other thing I have on my 0580 is a lawn tractor with a snow blower. We have worked very well with the park department and I do commend Scott for helping arrange this throughout the cold winter months. When we do get large snows or we know that they're forecasted, they've allowed us to use the skid steer that they usually commandeer for snow removal. But when it comes to Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, I have guys on shift. There guys are more on call at that time. We make sure that we've got the lot cleared, our parking lot cleared. We make sure that our apparatus bay, the apron there is cleared. For any time that we have an emergency, we don't wanna be driving over snowdrifts. We don't wanna have a truck slip and slide just coming out of the fire station. We don't wanna have trucks slip and slide responding to the station to respond to an emergency call. So we do very well with keeping our parking lot and our apparatus bay clean. With that, to alleviate some of that where we do have the jockey between getting their skid steer or not having their skid steer, I'm looking at getting a new lawn tractor for mowing in the summertime and then also for snow removal in the wintertime. And that kind of wraps up my capital asks, my expenditures and my revenues. So I'm open for any questions.
Shane Joseph here. Thank you for that explanation. I was curious to know of what you're requesting here going forward in 2026. How much of that is you're building up for the future? So in terms of what you need right now and you're thinking of the future, is that like 25% of your proposed budget, 35% or more?
I haven't broken it down percentage-wise. I know my 0550. I know that's the biggest number that's on there. But I would gladly share the spreadsheet that I have that will justify that. And that to me, and that's at $92,000. That's the money set aside just so we can repair or replace our apparatus. Right now, our oldest truck in the fleet is a 2,000. I don't know a lot of people that drive vehicles that are a year 2,000. And so just making the council aware, I mean, our frontline apparatus right now is a 2015. So we replace these on a 30-year basis and they just frog leap each other. So every 15 years, we're looking at replacing. So we'll have a, you know, in 2030, we should be replacing our engine one. In 2045, we should be replacing our engine three. And that's why, that's why that ask is there. That money was not put in last year, so we've already lost a year. So I'm not asking for makeup on that. I'm just asking that we stick to the schedule and hopefully we have enough money when engine one comes due, that we have the funding that's there, that's already there, that we know that we can utilize to be able to replace that apparatus.
And by apparatus, you mean a fire truck?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Sorry for not speaking fire lingo here. So what does that cost? I know there's a range of different ones, different sizes. Is that, what's the cost of a new fire engine to replace what we have, a single one?
Right now, what we're looking at, my best ballpark that I can give you is gonna be about $850,000.
Yeah.
I will tell you that just last week, the United States Legislature had hearings that consisted of the International Association of Firefighters and the International Association of Fire Chiefs. They were, there was a hearing due to its reaction, due to the, due to the increase in cost of what these apparatus, what their price like is. We've got manufacturers stating that it's due to supply and demand. They can't get materials. These two major international organizations have come to US Legislature and said, you really need to fact-check this because at that point, they feel like there's a little price gouging going on. I'm not getting in the middle of that. I'm not saying yes or no to either which way you're looking at that. But the price did go up so incrementally and it went up so fast that they're asking somebody to do some checks and balances on this. So we'll see how those hearings play out at this point in time. But right now, I'm gonna keep with my status quo and it's probably gonna be about $850,000 just to replace an apparatus. On the backside of that, I will say that the guys at the station have done a very good job of maintaining the apparatus that we have. They do a lot of in-house work, a lot of in-house maintenance. I don't want anybody paranoid that, oh, we're rolling out an old truck. No, we're rolling out a truck that will do 100% of what it's capable of doing. They pass their tests every year. If for some reason they don't, we have staff in-house that will make it so they pass their tests. There are some things that are out of our scope that we can't fix. Engine one being our second D-City apparatus, did have a mechanical seal, and I know this is fire lingo here, but I'm sorry, that started to leak. That's not something that we are qualified to repair. So we did have to send that off to get repaired because it's not supposed to leak. But we got that taken care of and sometime October, November, they will come and they will do our annual pump certifications. I have no... I have no issues. I have no qualms. They will pass their tests.
Shane, thank you. I mean, both, both you and Dylan seem to be really good stewards of your monies. You know where they're going, what they're for, planning ahead for eight hundred fifty thousand dollar vehicle. You, you gotta do that every year. So I, I commend you for picking, putting aside monies each year. I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Really, that's, I guess that's all I have for the fire side. I guess, like I said, if there's any more questions.
I think we can run through EM real quick, Shane.
Okay, moving on, our emergency management.
That one should be relatively quick. If you look at what we've had budgeted, you look at what we've spent, it's been very minimal over the last couple of years. We have done, I say we, staff, staff has done very well on maintaining the supplies that we have. Any issues they have, they've usually brought. We've been able to move ahead and with the funding that we currently have, we've been able to justify those purchases. The zero three three one, I, to preface this, I haven't asked for any increases on any of these line items. I do see that this year we will be using some of those line items a little bit more than what maybe you have seen in the past. The zero three three one, that's the funding that's taking care of the training I'm at right now. And this is for Minnesota Emergency Managers. This is where we get to sit. We get to attend classes all day and then we're networking during our off time. So with that, obviously that money that was there, if you look at zero three three one and that number isn't quite to the budgeted number, it's pretty much because I'm, I'm looking to find somebody within city staff that would like to maybe continue down this path, that would want to become an emergency manager. The city of Crookston has an issue, has any type of incident that's on a large scale. It's going to take more than one incident or one emergency manager to be able to step in, do the incident command side of things. So I've got a couple of feelers out right now. I'm hoping somebody takes the bait and wants to jump into this neck of the woods. It's, it's, it's a little different world compared to the fire service. So, but it's all about community preparedness, about making sure we're resilient as a community, make sure that we're prepared if an incident doesn't arise. And so I'm looking at that. So I guess that's why I kind of kept that funding there, hopefully for twenty twenty six. Everything else that is in there is modifications. I still have to work with IT. I have reorganized our EOC a little bit and I want to get that stepped up a little bit more when it comes to the technology side of things. I've worked really closely with Jody Boshane, our Polk County Emergency Manager. And the one, this one little thing that we have that's a benefit is that our county Emergency Operations Center is, it's right up the hill from the fire department. It's at the sheriff's office. And when we, in twenty twenty two, when we had the high water, there was a couple of them that just drove down and helped out at the EOC in Crookston or the city of Crookston where that's, that's a good thing for the city of Crookston, but they have the entire county to worry about. What I would like to see is some advancement in that EOC where we can communicate with our county EOC and we can do that virtually. And that, that'll be one thing that I do talk to our IT department about and have that up and revving and ready to go. Also with that, I'd also like to see some training with our department heads and also with council at some point in time. But I know that's a little bit of a, it's a little bit of a stretch, a little bit longer path to make sure we're all on the same page, that if an emergency does arise, that takes activation of the EOC, that we're all on the same page moving forward.
Shane, does the, the command post in the neighborhoods, do they need any upgrades? You know, I mean, we haven't had deactivated in a couple of years, which is a good thing.
So staff goes through there once or twice a year and they do check on the supplies that are there. When I went through the EOC, I do have a list of things that need to be purchased there. It's, it's amazing when you buy a twenty pack of double A batteries for our walkie talkies, whether they're in the EOC or they're in the fan post. And all of a sudden you go, you open it up and you go, oh, well, that's not good. And you see that a couple have broken down and all that deteriorated the whole pack. But I've got staff that is actively working. They're checking on those. They have on our monthly checklist. That's probably coming due now that it'll either be October or November that they will go and they will check all of our supplies and equipment. And if anything needs to be refurbished, they will refurbish it.
Thank you. Anything else on emergency management? All right. Well, thank you, Shane.
Thanks, Shane.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, we've got community development and Valley Tech Park.
I can see everybody. Can you see me, Darren?
This one, yeah. I can scooch.
I can read you. Good evening, everybody. And welcome aboard, Joseph. Yeah, nice. Our, if you're looking at our oh one oh one down to oh one four two, that would be our salaries. So I think that's pretty self-explanatory. One, you'll see something for Joseph's sake, that there is a change in salaries lower this year. That's because marketing used to be part of my budget and that's shifting under the city administrator this year. So that's the reason for that. You also see that reflected down here in our, some of our other accounts. So on our office supplies, we are pretty comfortable with those. I don't think there was any big changes. The biggest change that we do have on this is if you go down to the oh three one two, the professional fees. That was a question. The suggestion of Jeff Schubridge is that we already used up most of my contingency this year and he suggested that we would bump that up. We met with Holly and Taylor and Darren and we went over a, to get more defined on what, what is a professional fee, what do you think is going to be coming for twenty twenty six? Did you hand those out already? I'm going to hand these out too, so you can kind of see what professional fees we're looking at. We have fifty thousand in there. Just looking at what we will have coming, looking at the housing project, Casey's Housing, we're looking at building units behind Casey's gas station. And then also looking at the industrial park and looking at childcare as our top three initiatives for twenty twenty six. Here's some of the professional fees that we see coming down the pipeline. Some of them may be lower, some of them may be higher, but we did a lot of calling around today just to get some, what is the cost for surveys? What are costs for, excuse me, for legal? You know, what are, what are some of the costs? So this particular printout that you have there will kind of give you an estimate of what some of the professional fees would be. It's been strong direction for childcare and housing. In order to do that, we've got to, you know, finance that project. Give you a minute to look at that and ask any questions on it.
Do you currently have any grant writers?
Yeah, me and Taylor.
Taylor is a great writer.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, we've had it. If you have seen our, over the past three years, I started here in twenty twenty two in September. So I've been here just a little over three years right now. In the last three years, we have secured right around nine, between eight and nine million dollars in grants for the city and for the community.
Karen, I have a question about the professional fees. You have this year for the full budget is fifty thousand, but on this is seventy nine thousand.
Yeah, I, I think that fifty is a good place. I'd rather come back to you guys and talk to you about if we have additional fees, pass that fifty on that unless you prefer me to put that seventy nine in. I just feel like, you know, for instance, I've got twenty four thousand in there surveying, even if we just do four parcels out in the industrial park next year, Morgan, it's six thousand dollars just for a ten acre, but maybe it's a five acre. So it's only a few thousand. So I, you know, I did my best to estimate that we would be selling four different ten acre parcels.
If you have to come back to us, where do you think that money would come from?
Well, I can, I can allocate this, but I'm also trying to be cognizant that we have a budget, Delaine. So when we did it, I put fifty in there and then as I went through today and was looking at what we have coming up, this is the number I came up with. So I'm, I'm here before you to say, we put a placeholder in that until I got better details at the direction of, we all just had a meeting and they said, let's get stronger numbers. So these are the stronger numbers, Delaine. So eighty is more realistic.
You know, we could, we can revisit that too, Delaine. If you remember in the administration budget, we have professional fees in there also for, I think some of it could be used for certain things like this and other projects are asked from the council. So that was largely increased also.
So the childcare and the Casey Housing project is a relative thing. It's ones that are happening in EDA, I think it's a forty five.
Correct, correct. And then anything we do in the industrial park, we'll have to survey it. That's the biggest one surveying. That's going to be the biggest challenge I'll do this year.
Just thinking of the media conversations and media too, that were the last few months, it seems like it was, I mean, I mean, if we had the, only the old fifty thousand, it seems like the Casey Housing
Yeah, and maybe we won't sell any, but if we don't sell any, I, I would foresee that we will sell some acreage in the industrial park because we have SLC, we have, we've contracted with that. We're on the deed website. We're at, they're constantly representing us at different trade shows and that type of stuff, which is, you know, the, the industrial park is a, a big deal. We've got the railroad spur going in. They're moving dirt here this fall and then they're hoping that they can begin building that out. I met with a couple of people who had expressed interest. They have letter, letter of intent for our, when we did the EDA grant. And I was out there with a company and a couple of their clients from Japan. And the second they saw that that railroad spur was going in, they looked at the, the company from Gary and they said, when can we get this? Because they understand that the cost savings and the benefit to the ag community is going to be substantial out there. So I'm working on that and then working with a couple of their local companies to maybe pull them together and have a partnership to start building some warehousing out there. So.
I guess I would just rather budget realistically.
Okay. Well, this is what I came up with once I, I went.
Yeah, because I, I mean, I, I agree with that. I mean, I don't, I don't like the fact of, you think it's realistic at what, seventy nine and put that on your budget because coming back and saying, you know, we're going to need another twenty five or twenty nine thousand. I mean, the question is, is can't take from reserves anymore.
Yeah, noted, Delaine. So we'll change that to eighty. But when I went in there, I thought we were close to fifty, but then in running the numbers today and calling around for costs, that's what, that's what happened at the, at the time I got that done.
That's fair. I just don't want to be like, just, just going with the assuming what we think since we are going to have extra money.
Okay, I'm with you on that. So we'll change that number to eighty. Are you good with that, Darren?
Yep.
Okay. Seventy. Do you want to make it around eighty or do you want seventy nine?
Whatever number you think it needs to be.
I'm going to go eighty. So that, that was the biggest. We did lower our travel and training. I had had some extra money in the last year for some extra training. I had new staff and that I don't think we'll be needing as much this year on that.
Do you feel like you'll be able to use the ten thousand?
Yes. Yep. Yes, because the training we go to, like for instance, we went to the Brownsville training and then we ended up writing that redevelopment grant based on what we learned in that training. There's just, any training we go to, we try to apply to a project that we have working in the city. You know, and of course, sometimes it's the League of Minnesota Cities or Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities.
Not in the ten thousand that we have.
Correct. Yep. I don't have new staff this year, so I think we'll be good. And then you'll see a big jump in the printing and advertising, that oh three five three, for reference on that one, Joseph. That was our, marketing budget was in my budget in twenty twenty four. Will not be in it this year. So I think that for just marketing and printing and advertising, I'll be around a thousand dollars just for my own department. I did. That's why I'm trying to, I was listening to you for the other two company, to the other two departments. So those are it.
You skipped over our legal publications.
Oh, legal publications. Yeah, I had to up that to five thousand. We'll be publishing RFPs for the Casey's Housing Project. If we do something with the building a childcare facility with the industrial park. So we're going to need legal publications and it is expensive. We checked just on one publication. It was six hundred dollars that we spent just for one RFP. And so that's, that's not going to suffice. And then also we are trying to clean up the miscellaneouses. We talked with Holly and, and we talked with Darren about getting rid of some of those things we're not using or like miscellaneous shouldn't be in there. What is it? What is really, what is it? Because miscellaneous, then we have to always go dig like, what was that for? So we're trying to really get more defined in what we're using over in economic development. So. Subscriptions and dues, that's pretty standard. I'll be back up to the twenty twenty four. I've been out for a few months. I want to thank you guys for pinch hitting for me and I want to thank Taylor and Teresa and everybody else who's my board members who filled in for me while I was out. So.
I have a follow up question about the grants and I thank you so much for explaining this apart. Do you also have administrative fees in those grants?
No, we've not. But I heard somebody say that, oh, they always have admin fees. No. There's one small cities grant that is out there, CDG, and it is about, you can get some from that, but we've had it six times and nobody has ever, ever run that. We always market that out because it is so complicated. So that one, we put out to a company that does it all the time, the same as we've always done. There is one grant. We got a local housing trust fund, which is the first one that we've gotten that has admin available and that's ten percent. So the state awarded us a hundred and fifty thousand. My EDA board matched it with a hundred and fifty thousand. So that will be thirty thousand over the next three years. So ten thousand a year. So this is the first actual.
It's nice when those are included. It's nice when those are included.
Joseph, it's like heaven. Absolutely. Yeah. And then we're also working, one of the things we've been working on consistently is to find grants that can offset our staff charges and maybe that we can use our staff that we have and then maybe backfill with the temporary person while they're working on different projects. So those are things that we're constantly looking at. And then we monitor as many grants as possible. And if we see one that comes up, whether it's for parks or recreation, or if it's no matter who it's for, we try to send it over to them to say, hey, do you guys need this? And if so, maybe we can use that to stretch your dollars out with a, for instance, we got a one point one active transportation grant in twenty three when I first came on here. I think Chuck and I had both just started and we worked with our, our engineer and we got one point one three to offset our costs for the twenty seven project, the twenty twenty seven highway two corridor. And that's going to offset city costs for that. And then another thing that we did was we went and lobbied down at the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Day at the Hill, went down and lobbied there and worked with our engineers and also Thirty and Hood or the Coalition of Greater Minnesota's people. And we were awarded two point seven million dollars to offset Crookston costs on that. So we're constantly trying to watch our monies because, you know, I come from this area too. We know that people are stretched and around. We know that people are stretched and around a little city that had no money at all, and we had to find money for every single thing, because the general budget was a hundred thousand, say, for the whole year, it's nothing. So, any other questions on that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I might have been, I've been looking at numbers and trying to listen and all that, so. Uh, the temporary salaries, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, yep.
I don't, no, have I heard that?
The temporary salary, uh, there's a note on the bottom of that that we added just to explain it. So the temporary salaries, this goes to my point of finding money for, for salaries. Sometimes we can get a temporary salary, like right now, we have an EDA person that we hired, and there'll be a temporary, like a grant funded, so it's kind of a wash, uh, so it will be a reimbursement through the grant. But we had to put a placeholder in there, so because we have fifty thousand this year that were on the EDA, uh, over at the cheetah department, not the city, um, we put fifty thousand in there for a placeholder, but that would be a, a reimbursement. So if we get a grant for, let's say, a grant funded position to do a project in town, that that could come in, and then we could pay ourselves back. But we needed a placeholder, because Holly explained this last year, we didn't have a placeholder for that.
All right.
So it's not really there, but it is there.
Yeah.
Thanks, Emily, I missed that. Any other questions on?
So these funds are all city funds or cheetah funds?
These are city funds, yep. Those dollars over out there are separate, that's, that's a separate entity.
Any other questions? Should we got to move on to Valley Tech Park?
Thank you, Taylor. I'm going to ask Teresa to come up and join me on that, because I've been out, and I know there's been a lot of discussion and some other opportunities at Valley Tech, so. And she's been there for almost twenty years, so she knows where the laws are very defined on. Did you, did you change it since the last time I was there? I don't think so. So, oop, I'm sure I'm here, I'll need to close, I'll be able to see, right? So we didn't really change, we're almost like a duplicate of, of last year. We, um, this year we did have one sort of furnace that came in with that eighteen thousand.
Yeah, sorry, we kind of blew our budget. I thought that we had more budgeted for capital funds. But we did have, um, our two entryway heaters, they both kind of broke down, so we had to fix those. Back in vertical malt space, they had a, excuse me, it's kind of like a garage heater. They had one that broke down, but then they were able to take parts from one, fix another. So we've been diligent trying to do repairs. Um, the other thing that was kind of high was, um, the furnace and heat pump that had been budgeted prior when Corky was interim. And then that just got done this summer, I believe, or this spring. So that's why we were kind of over on that.
So that was carried over funds, but we did have to put it.
And our light pole went out at Valley Tech.
That's what I said, yeah, I got the same.
Yep.
Yep, light went, light went out, I was spending. Utilities, we were holding those at fifty, because we don't know what else is going to happen in the back in the vertical malt portion. That could be less, uh, we'll have to do more research on that to see what all happens on that. So we just agreed to hold that at fifty thousand, because that is where it has been up there. Uh, this year it's lower, just because of how some of the breweries have closed and different things have, have transitioned. But we'll, we'll know more on that. And I don't think there was any other major changes. I think we'll be holding our budget the same on that. The other improvements, to Teresa's point, we did have the lights and the, and the furnace, that would be in the five thirty. And there was a roof budgeted, we did pull that out of our CIP. We did get a much better quote for the roof than the three hundred and fifty thousand that SEH had, uh, estimated on that. So I would suggest if we're going to move forward with that, that we get a more firm quote, like, like we did, like, when we got from Cory that one time.
That's where we got that.
The three fifty?
Yeah, I also spoke with Barry.
Real deal?
Just recently, and he said, most likely leave it at three fifty.
Okay, we're going to leave that at three fifty, so we.
Because you might, said there might be some landscaping that we have to do too.
Good point. So we'll put that three hundred and fifty back in. We did pull it out, because Corky's like, we don't have it, let's pull it out, so we can kind of get through last year. So this year, we'll put that back in when we do our CIPs on that.
Holly, how much do we have in reserves right now for, for the roof? Is it fifty, a hundred thousand?
So the three fifty is for the roof, correct?
Year after year, the money has been spent, so it actually hasn't been marked. Or if it has, it's been a reduced amount, so it hasn't been the other thousand or whatever.
Okay, so we may or may not have.
You might have some, but I don't know how much.
Okay, it just is, gets washed back in the general budget, I think, is what they've been doing with it, yeah, so, okay.
And which one, did you say that pretty, pretty go back to this, is your hyper narrow, or?
Yeah, for capital funds.
Yep.
Still an improvement, she's added us?
Other improvement, well, it says other improvement.
Other improvements, yeah.
Five thirty?
Is that the account you use for capital funds?
And then just, the five thirty, is that the one for capital improvements?
Those are CIP.
Yeah.
Yeah, but those are, we got.
Okay, well, that three fifty, we'll go back on that.
Yep.
So that is the biggest. Uh, we've considered that our rents will be the same, if you go at this other side there.
The revenues?
Revenues, yeah.
Revenues, yep.
Miscellaneous revenues?
Six, two, two, three?
Page one?
Oh, sorry. I probably started on the wrong side. So we held that one at ninety.
Any other questions on Valley Tech Park? Looks like you're studying something there.
I thought she was looking.
Looking at a line at him.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
I guess Bishop comments?
Anybody else make community, are there comments?
I want to say thank you for all your extra time on this budget.
Thanks, Gary.
Thanks.
Gary, you're first.
Thanks, mom.
I'm still kind of on some pain stuff.
So my name is Bishop Benson, Ward one, through on for Leonard. Um, what I've gathered from my last now four meetings of observation is that our greatest increase is stemming from trying to create new reserves as well as bringing up physical, uh, things to par, like buildings, as well as equipment or vehicles. Uh, I'd just like to bring into a point to council to consider that all three, and chasing them all three in one year is probably going to be detrimental to tax increasing. Um, the last several years have been pretty heavy for all of us. I think all of us are pretty familiar, anybody who holds a mortgage or business mortgages in any ways have seen those increases. Speaking for myself even, I can say I have managed to secure a lower rate in homeowner's insurance the last three years consistently, while not being able to see a fall on my taxes in my home. My payment on my home has increased over a hundred and eighty dollars per month over the last three and a half years. Um, and now I see that we're trying to come up with essentially a million dollars while cutting six out of eight other entities and programs, it sounds like. So I would encourage the council to, uh, assess where this money that is going to be put aside for the future is actually going to be put aside for the future and not just spent, um, year to year to allocate for things that are being brought up. Uh, that would help tremendously in accepting transparency with the budget, um, knowing how these reserves are not just managed, but how they're actually, uh, going to be protected. Because from the sounds of it, we've done this in the past, and they haven't been protected. Um, they've been reallocated through different, uh, council meetings. So that's just a large concern, I think, for most taxpaying populations. Uh, the other thing in, in a common consensus, and I'm not going to go on much longer here, because I'm often easily dismissed by the leadership in this city. Um, but I will go on to say that most people that hold mortgages, you know, they build this community, and the houses that they hold, a lot of them are, are starting to diminish, like, has been assessed, and the city's diminishing tremendously. So for us to ensue another tax increase and burden, from what I hear, uh, just seems frivolous and unfair, um, completely. And not only that, but I would encourage that we, you know, identify and assess if we're sinking money into structure, we're sinking money into equipment, and we're sinking money into the future, that each different entity outweighs those evenly, so that they're not all trying to be done each year, every year. Because that's not realistic, and spend it all and hold it all. It doesn't work like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, next budget, Wednesday, five thirty. Public Works, Works on Wednesday. Okay. We are adjourned.